I am the Longview City Attorney Sherri Kessler. And since the village president, as well as the clerk have both resigned, I will call the meeting to order according to the agenda and call the roll. Tyler Clark? Betty Dedman?
Here.
Martha Mupuski?
Here.
Perry Petticourt?
There.
Melinda Skinner?
Here.
And what about me?
Well, I also received a copy of a notarized resignation.
Well then, maybe you ought to tell me who notarized that signature without my permission. And it means the fact that I signed that not even in this building. And I want to know who witnessed this signature.
So you did not sign this on this letterhead and hand this to the notary?
No, I did not. I dropped it on the table. Now tell me what I resigned from.
Dropped it on the table.
Tell me what I resigned from.
I resign as of tonight, June 22nd, 2020.
From what?
Well, this is what I've received.
Yeah, exactly. Like I said, I want to know who witnessed it.
I witnessed it. I'll look and you put it in front of me.
You did not. I did not. I dropped it on... End of the table. There were people between you and me.
You're splitting hairs.
No, I'm not. And I don't think the state attorney will either. Like I said, who witnessed it? Show me who witnessed it.
I witnessed it.
No, you didn't. You were not in my home when I signed that paper. I was at my home when I wrote that out and signed it and came back. Y'all asked Melinda's grandson. I almost hit him out with a dark rain with just a diaper on. If it wasn't with a diaper, I would have been hit. Because he'd be running around in the street. Had y'all asked him, but no.
Well, you're free to make a challenge. That's what I've received as a resignation. So you're saying you did not resign and put it on the table?
What did I resign from? For all this sense, I could resign for the human race. Not good enough. Doesn't say I resigned my seat, does it? And you had no right to judge it with a notary. That's illegal. And you just put your job...
I asked you, you were gonna say...
You just put your job in jeopardy.
Oh, God.
Because you did not see me sign that.
Well, moving forward, that's what I've received. All I have is what I've been given, along with the other two types.
There's no even date on there from when she did it.
You dated it, I think, the 20th?
I dated it, but she didn't. Like I said, I want proof in her book. She got a vote for their letter board. I want to see it. And I want to know who witnessed it. You told me you had to have two witnesses.
Five people witnessed that you put it in front of me.
Already signed. I didn't sign it in front of you.
It doesn't matter. I recognize your signature.
It doesn't matter. Like I said, what did I resign from?
I have an argument over this. You don't think you can tell them that you never voted for her?
Well, I think, moving forward, first, we need to handle... We need to find a form which we have present. And next, we need to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I ask everybody to stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as I said, I have three copies here. The village president, the village clerk. And I did receive the one that says I resigned. And my understanding is it was presented to the table. At this point, I'll move forward with the president and the village clerk. And I will accept these as reported per 65 ILCS 531-10-50. The first order of business is the election of a village president pro tem. As per 65 ILCS 53.1-50F1. As per the reference statute, are there any nominations from among the trustees presently serving? I nominate Tyler Clark.
I'll second it.
Seeing no other nominations, I will call the roll. Tyler Clark?
Here.
We're taking a vote, Tyler. Yeah, you can vote anyway. Betty Dedman?
Yay.
Martha Mupuski?
Yay.
Perry Petticourt?
Yeah.
Melinda Skinner?
Yay.
I now will turn over the meeting to your new village president pro tem and let him take over the meeting. Yes. No, you were already sworn in because you're already a member of the village board. And you were sworn in then. The statute does not require it.
He also has to resign for the village board.
He does not for pro tem. Actually, the statute dictates that one of the members can be appointed pro tem. Meaning, he's not been elected. If he wants to run for election, obviously, he can't run for both come spring.
He still has to buy it too, right?
Correct. The statute is very clear that when there's a resignation or a death, the way that things move forward.
Somebody's got faith in her. As president pro tem, we need to nominate a clerk. And I nominate Stephanie Aubrey. You'll say it?
Hi, how are you?
So, I have to call a vote?
Yes, you called a vote.
Laura?
Did I have the wrong caller? Sorry.
Okay, well, nobody voiced another option. I mean, there's the option.
But it just blows my mind if you get a vote. I don't have this.
All right.
Good general.
Stephanie Aubrey.
It's happened before. Who aren't here?
Well, I... I want to... Like the problem.
All right. Well, nobody spoke up about Robin. So... Okay.
So, mayor, do you call on me?
Yeah, go ahead. This is your playground.
The statute is very clear that the mayor makes appointments. You can vote yes or no. If the vote is not carried, then the mayor can bring... I'm sorry, village president. Mayor is just a euphemism word. But the village president then can bring an additional member if that is not elected, obviously. If that's elected is the wrong word. If it's not voted by the board, then he can bring up a new term. But unlike the position of village president, where we could take nominations, the statute calls for an appointment by the village president.
Ready?
Yay.
Martha?
Yay.
It's a yay for me. So Stephanie Aubrey is our new clerk. I guess I'll swear her in.
Yes, as mayor, as village president, you swear. Village president or clerk?
All right, so... I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the office of Longview Village Clerk.
Of the office of Longview Village Clerk.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And then we need you to sign. Please. Well, the next order of business was going to be to appoint another trustee. But with the objection, I guess we'll take it under advisement and decide next meeting if we're going to appoint someone else or if we're going to hold you to your resignation. I understand that. And that's why we're going to take it under advisement. We're not going to make any rash decisions and fly off the handle about anybody. So I guess we'll get to the normal business of approving the minutes for the last meeting of... June 17th and June 22nd, 2020. Does anybody have any problems with the minutes?
No. If we had minutes, we probably would have done it. I think everybody got good minutes.
Yeah.
We did, we got them.
Well, we were under the impression you resigned. I know she gave a copy to everybody. I thought she...
Well, I have all... All I know is I looked over and I read.
Can we make copies real quick? I guess I might look at it.
I haven't seen like 20, about 17 and 22. You want to understand if the others... 20, 22nd? No.
It was the 17th and 22nd.
That's right. How many copies?
I guess for everybody, just to be on the safe side. I guess while you're making copies, we can look at the treasurer report.
I do have some problems.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. I guess we'll look over the treasurer report while he prints copies in the minutes. I thought we all have copies.
I do want to mention that I mistakenly... You put the wrong checking book.
Okay.
And started writing water bills out of the journal spot. And then I done it. So that's what all those voids are for.
Okay.
At the end. What the word? I'm going to chop it up. Being here too long.
Yeah. It's been kind of a weird month.
So that's... In general, that's what all those voids are for. That they were written correctly in the water. Don't you know if you have any more questions? Then I have to...
No, I think to me, everything looks about the same.
I don't know. Yeah, it's pretty good. They look normal.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to agree.
I move to approve the treasurer report. I'll second it.
All right. Melinda?
Yay.
Martha?
Yay.
Carrie?
Here.
Maggie?
Nick.
Martha?
Yeah.
And it's a yay for me.
Kimper Haylen got our files for last year, 2019, 2020. And in talking to Karen, we have a very old version of QuickBooks. Shitty request that we get an updated version of QuickBooks, or her latest 2020 version.
Okay.
And she says what they're having... Thank... She said we have a 2012, 14, 15 version, something like that. But what they have to do is they have to take our version, put it on an old computer, upgrade that, take it to another computer, upgrade that, and then take it to their main computer and get it upgraded to...
So it's...
So, and they request that we get a new version of that and hopefully a version... I believe QuickBooks has a payroll thing on it. And...
Do you have any idea about that book?
Yeah, look into it.
No, I haven't.
And they didn't give you any idea when we talked to them?
Could you find that out? Because I would sure like to have them buy that for you.
I guess we can put it off the agenda for next month to vote on it. You can get all the information together.
About how long would it take you to convert everything over then? Do you have any idea?
Thank you. I will email Karen.
And ask her what she wants to say.
See what she had, or at least...
Yeah.
I think she had surgery today, but she said she'd still be working.
Yeah, I don't see why we can't put it on the agenda for next month to vote on it. I said, can we put it on the agenda for next month?
You have a good idea.
I entertain a motion to put it on the agenda for next month.
And what would be the chances of getting a calculator?
That's probably easier, because we might know somebody's got one and give you one.
Well, despite the fact I'm not going to be here next month, I would like to move that we purchase our treasurer a 2020 version of QuickBooks. And then we can put that on the agenda for the August meeting. And I need to look at pricing. I'm kind of busy at work. And that's not all.
You second it? Melinda? Laura?
Hey.
Carrie? Ready?
Yay.
Martha?
Yeah.
And it's a yay for me.
She found a version 2020 Desktop Pro with enhanced payroll, 120 accounting software for $288 a month. Which is about what I...
But that's on Amazon, so you probably could find it cheaper.
Okay.
That's about what I was thinking. Thank you.
Can we move to go ahead and allocate the funds for that? Can you do that now? Okay.
That's a hit. I thought it was going to be like $800 or something. I did too. I was...
All right, well, I guess it'll be a true thing. I don't think it's that way. But I guess we'll go back to the minutes and approve the minutes.
Does anybody need more time? One minute? I move to approve the minutes from Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. I second it.
Melinda?
Yay.
Laura? Carrie? Ready?
Yay.
Martha?
Yeah.
It's a yay. We made a vote on both of them?
Yes, I think we did.
Okay. Because there's also the 22nd in there too.
I move to approve the minutes from Wednesday, June 22nd, 2020. I'll second it.
Melinda?
Yeah.
Laura?
Yes.
Carrie? Uh, Carrie? Benny?
Yeah.
Martha?
Yeah.
It's a yay for me. All right, I guess... Next on the agenda is... The minutes are approved. Sorry. Next on the agenda is the water report.
There's something coming up with the EPA that's... I'll wait for these ladies to finish their meeting. The EPA has asked that we put some more media in our backwash. That sounds crazy. But basically, we backwash the filters, like the backwash filters on small pool.
Okay.
The backwash and our water filters every week. And that effluent, this backwash that goes into this little pit and then receives and goes out into the normal drainage. And what the media does is filters out all that backwash stuff, mostly iron. So it's going to come out. That's why the water looks really rusty colored. So they've asked that... And they've done this over the phone, which means it's pretty informal. Unfortunately, I think it's with COVID. You know, even the EPA is kind of hurting their calling. Instead of sending letters, instead of making inspections. So it's kind of nice of them to do it, at least. But that's something I'm looking into as far as the media, the cost of it, and what media to get. We did this thing about 40 years ago. It seems as though maybe we can just put enough in there. So I'm going to look into that. That's something that... Just coming out, I'll do some research on that and get back to everybody next month. As far as the building stuff, I echo her desire to get new QuickBooks. And so that would be a wonderful thing, because there's a few tweaks that would make the building process even faster as far as the computer to do some math and that kind of stuff. And so whatever we can get to approve that. Now, I would like to consider the option. As soon as this COVID passes, the QuickBooks expert coming in and showing us it's about four hours of training on. You ask the specific questions. That's what Tracy Bosch had done. She said it was wonderful. She gave me the contact. So they come in, you ask them the questions you have, they show you how to tweak it, fix it, streamline it, and all in about four hours. So that would be very helpful with ours speaking with them. So we'll just look into that and act as opposed to stuff.
That's it? All right. Any new business?
I want to take a poll comment.
I've got new business. I would like to direct our mayor to ask our attorney to check into what the... If we have a verbal agreement, if we have a written agreement for renting this building? Because I have never seen it. All I've been told is, is that the next thing? And I'm not sure exactly where we stand. All I know is that we have trustees who have no access and we have 24 years to do. I've never heard of anybody renting anything where they're not allowed to have access. So I would appreciate for you to look into that and get back to us so we know.
Any business? I'll do that?
Well, we had a public comment that was surrounding you. So there you go.
Yep. So we have Judy Herbert. And it says her topic is winter months.
Yes. Last time I was in here, that was the big thing. That was before all eight of them were put up within here a mile and a half. What's happening with that? Anything?
Well, good news is we have our lawyer here, so she can tell us all that.
I would suggest for August to put me on the agenda.
Okay.
And that way, I can give a report.
Okay.
And hopefully my level of work then.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to put her on the agenda then.
Yes, I agree.
You can do that. I second.
All right. Melinda?
Hey.
Laura?
Hey.
Carrie? Benny?
Yeah.
Martha?
Yeah.
It's a yay for me. And then the other person we have is Brittany with Village Stuff.
Hi, my name's Brayden McIntyre. I would just like to give a little bit of information on this ill-revoked police book. So... All public bodies, therefore, must develop a procedural rule that allows the public to have the ability to address the public body. This includes time, signing up beforehand, the things that you guys are making us do tonight. We have no ordinance set requiring us to sign up for public comment nor any time limitation. So I'd like to ask the board to consider that. Secondly, you all voted to purchase this new computer program, which is in violation of the Open Meetings Act. That was not on the agenda.
We voted to put it on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, they voted to put it on the agenda.
We didn't approve to buy anything tonight. We approved to put it on the agenda.
Okay, also, board members don't need to harass other people in the public while they're speaking. Melinda?
Brittany? All right. I want to stay calm here. Double DUIer.
Hey.
Why does she have to talk? Stop. Hey, I'll take a breath right now. How many we need?
I'm trying.
Also, how can you accept a resignation when it wasn't even notarized beforehand?
That... I took that under advisement.
But you did not let her vote on anything. She wasn't voting.
I did let her vote on everything.
Nobody called on her to vote you in as the village president. Nobody even called on her. I would highly suggest to the board that public comment is just that, public comment. You do not have to engage with the people. You do not have to provide answers. The way that this board has been acting is unbelievable. That is all.
Well, that was all that... That was the only people that signed up for public comment. If there's anybody else, I guess, you listen if you have anything to say.
Yes, I have one thing to say. I was just called a crackhead and crack goes on in my garage. I want something done about her.
Yes, I have one thing to say. I was just called a crackhead and crack goes on in my garage. I want something done about her. I was called the same thing.
Why does she give a talk?
Why does she? I meant to drive, she drove me first.
What, excuse me, because you're the one talking about my driving record, Melinda. You're supposed to.
It's public record.
You are supposed to be.
It's public record.
You know what? You're supposed to be a public servant. You don't deserve shit in this committee.
Shit, I have for twenty-five years since we sat down.
We're not gonna yell at each other.
You were gone for a whole fucking year. Get out of here.
Right, that was warping.
Yeah, fuck you.
Hey! This, this whole thing is out of order, Melinda. Stop. This whole thing is out of order. We're not doing this. We're gonna have nice meetings. We're not yelling at each other. We're done with that. Any further disruption, and there'll be consequences.
So maybe you should let your board members know that when they harass members of.
I am trying to. But when I am trying to talk to her and you are still goading her into continuing, then I can't get her under control.
She's not a child. She's an adult. She should act like one.
So should you.
I do. I was gonna say, my comment is plea, until you decided to bring up my driving.
No, you brought up me first.
Melinda!
You personally attacked me first.
It's okay, I want it on video.
I don't care what you've got on video.
Melinda!
I don't care.
No.
All right.
Wait until you drive out of town.
Stop. This, this whole thing, this whole thing is out of order.
DUI on top of another one.
Stop. Personal lives have no business running here. Let's stop.
I didn't worth that personal life. It's not for over that.
We're done. We're done with the personal lives.
There's tea.
Look, we need to stop this, or we will be asking people to.
It happened when her daddy was the mayor. It happened when Ron was the clerk.
Oh, that's not my daddy, by the way.
Yep, her daddy.
Melinda!
And he had kind of this.
Melinda, you're gonna have to leave if you can't stop. Please calm down.
I'm just sitting here.
I know. Please calm down. Is there any other business to attend to, or, uh, public comment?
I'll make a, or.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Melinda? Laura?
Hey.
Harry? Benny?
Yeah.
Martha?
It's a yay for me. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-two.
I wanted to stop. I thought we fixed it.